Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the caucus meeting to order for Monday, January tenth of 2022. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. As you can see, this is a hybrid meeting, and for the first time that I can recall, the preponderance of members of county council are online rather than in chambers. The members in chambers are Ms. Howard, Mr. Rodman, Mr. Somerville, and myself. The other six members, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Fluehling, Mr. Glover, Mr. Hervishon, Mr. Lawson, and Mr. McKellen are online, but we do constitute a quorum to conduct business of county council.
Cunningham, stay on there.
Oh, Mr. Cunningham.
Joe, I would never miss your face. You think I'd miss time spending with you? Come on.
Yes. Oh, you know why? Because you're all the way up at the top, and I started lower than that. Okay, may I have an approval of tonight's caucus agenda, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham made the motion. Mr. Rodman made the second. Without objection, the caucus meeting agenda will be approved, and I do not see any objections. The agenda review. We're going to have one minor change to the agenda. Item number five, which is the approval of minutes for the county council meeting, will be removed as there were some problems with the minutes. Other than that, the agenda will be as it is. Is there any concerns, comments, suggestions, changes to the council agenda meeting?
I just have a question for, maybe for Kurt on this. We have an item on there where we're taking money, allocating money from the contingency that we've done, and we're going to, we kind of set up a contingency. We do that on a regular basis. And I'm wondering whether we actually, since we've already appropriated the money in the contingency, whether we would have to go through three readings every time we dip into the contingency, and whether we couldn't streamline that in some form.
Yes, sir. I thought that through and looked at what we were doing and what we needed to do. And since the money in general contingency is just that, it's a leftover surplus, whatever you want to call it, to make a specific use of it needs to mean, makes, make it, needs to be by appropriation.
Okay, that's fine.
In accordance with orders.
Okay.
But thank you for the question, yes.
Any other comments? Seeing none. We do have a short executive session. It is our intention to start tonight's council meeting no later than 5:30 this afternoon, so I would ask for a member of council to make a motion for us to go into executive session for two items. Go to receive legal advice.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
A second.
Mr. Cunningham does the second. Mr. Somerville does the first. We will go into executive session now without objection, and I see no objections, and will only be there for a very short period of time. For receipt of legal advice for Bostick Lane and the opiate litigation.
Okay, we are back from executive session. We did discuss two items in executive session. And on the regular agenda, there are matters arising out of the caucus executive session where we will be taking specific action. Before we adjourn, is there any other item to come before us at the caucus meeting? Mr. Radman?
Since we have five minutes, we got discussion. I could cover one item that I'd cover otherwise covered in the meeting, and that has to do with the possibility of a sales tax referendum for transportation later this year. As background, we, as you all may know, the 18 referendum acquired the amount of money it needed within the period, and in fact, the period was actually truncated, and we anticipate that they'll probably be on the order of 16 or 18 million in additional funds which we can allocate back to the three projects that were involved, one being the pathways, one being Ladies Island, and the other being the 278. So look for Public Facilities to bring that forward. At our Public Facilities Committee meetings coming up, we've got a lot on our agenda, and it turns out we have a fifth Monday in this month, so we're going to have two public facilities meetings. One will be third Monday, and one will be fifth Monday, and we'll, I think that'll be helpful. And one of the items we're going to talk about is the 22, the possibility of a 22 referendum. I think we all know that there's a real need with the growth in the area for roads. I think it's fair to say that we don't see a lot of other alternatives to fund a good chunk of that, and in fact, the sales tax, transportation is in fact, the best way for us to do that. So we're going to start to wade into that. Part of our discussion will be, do we want to go with a short term or a long term, and discussions to date have kind of suggested, as some of the other counties in the state have done, is that we may want to go to a longer, an eight or 10-year type of thing, which is a different kind of approach, because part of what we have to do is have a mechanism in order to allocate how we would spend those monies, whereas if we do a short one, we typically just identify three or four projects, and it's very definitive. As part of that, one of the suggestions that staff is bringing forward, which I think makes a lot of sense, is that we would establish a citizens committee in order to help prioritize the projects, and it would not be a one-time, it would be an ongoing type of thing. And we still have some things to learn from our neighbor sister counties that have done some of these kind of things, but we're going to start to talk about that a little bit at the first meeting, which would be a week from today. And the initial thought was that we might have each of us as council members appoint one person, and then maybe one person from each of the municipalities, which would give us about 15, 16 people as a way to do that. And they could also be a good sounding board. And then that would be in parallel with the Transportation Advisory Group, where the elected officials have a chance to weigh in. The last comment I would make, and this is really to us as council members, I don't think any of us disagree that we need to do something to take care of the roads, and the real question if we do a referendum is how long is it, what does it look like, what are the terms? So I would hope that we would come out of all of this exercise with a unanimous agreement among council as what it is that we want to, want this to look like, because anything less than that gets to be difficult when we go out to the voters. So as part of that, I think a lot of our dialogue ought to be on good feedback from each of us as to what are the items that are important to us, and what we think is needed to make this an attractive thing to all the people. So I hope they'll all go into this thing with that kind of an attitude. And that was all ahead. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing, the caucus meeting will now be adjourned, and we'll wait to gear up for the council meeting. It'll be about a couple minutes before we're back online. Yep, we're going to start right at 5:30.
Okay.
Tom spoke at the Republican Lunch today.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, amazing the amount of potential money that they've got to divvy up. And it's one of the things that makes the referendum a little bit difficult because of the moving pieces, and all the more reason to do a long term, because if we put short-term projects that are too specific in, they'll say, oh, you're all covered, you don't need it.
Call it to order. We do have a hybrid meeting this evening, which means we do have members of council online and in person, but all 11 of us are here. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing afterwards? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord, as we approach the new year, let us take a few minutes to reflect on the past year. Let us reflect with gratitude on all that we have been given in life, our family, our friends, our council members, and the community we serve in Beaufort County. Let us reflect with sadness on the lives that were lost as a result of the pandemic and those who have been affected by the pandemic. Let us reflect with gladness on all that is good and beautiful and kind and giving in the world. Let us reflect with hope on the transformational times in which we live, filled with innovation, advancements, and endless possibility. As we make these reflections, let us pray for peace in the world. Let us pray for health and happiness in our community. Let us pray for support in our mission to make Beaufort County the place to live, work, and play, producing the next generation of thinkers and leaders with a strong calling to make the world a better place. And finally, let us look forward to a new year with a renewed sense of purpose and hope and giving. Whether our impact is to be big or small, affecting many or affecting one, let us use our time, talents, and treasure to make a difference in the world. Amen. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would like a member of council to approve the agenda with the modification of removal of item number five, which is the approval of minutes. May I have such a motion? Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second, please.
No second.
Ms. Howard makes the second. The motion will be approved as amended without any objection, and I see no objections. We begin with our administrator's report. Mr. Greenway.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity. Happy new year to everyone. I've seen some of you since then, some of you I have not, but looking forward to productive 2022 as we had in 2021. A couple of preliminary things I need to tell you this evening is that I had mentioned to you some time ago that we had had a couple of school impact fee appeals filed. One of those was for a development that we have a development agreement on called Pepper Hall. Tom Kevany, legal department, Chuck Atkinson, and myself worked with some outside counsel to respond to that impact fee appeal. We denied the appeal this week. Those letters went out. I have provided a copy of that letter to the Beaufort County School District. I do not know what the outcome of that appeal would be, if there's going to be subsequent litigation to that. If there is, we will be notifying you of that, of course, and then we will also be working with the Beaufort School District with regards to sharing the cost of defending the school impact fee. In addition to that, we are, Dr. Rodriguez and I will be beginning tomorrow evening, going around to the various municipalities in the south of the broad to talk to the city councils about the school impact fee. They've asked for him to come down and answer questions about growth. I'll be going along with him to Bluffton tomorrow evening, Hilton Head in February, and we're still working the schedule hard even. So those are two items that that I have for you this evening. As I typically do, I introduce to you all various employees. I have three employees I'm going to talk to you about tonight, and I'm going to introduce to you two new employees here in a few moments. Our first employee, Angelica, go come on up, please. Occasionally, as county administrator, I get to introduce you to folks that I also worked with before I was county administrator. I was involved in bringing Angelica to Beaufort County as planning director. She started out with us in the planning and zoning department. And we want to talk a little bit here just off the cuff. Okay, I got stuff to say, but I know you, so I want to talk a little bit here. Once in a while, you encounter folks that, you know, have to come to work, and they carry a certain amount of hell with them in their private life. And I watched Angelica do that. And I want to let her know, and I want to let you all know how proud I am of her because she persevered through all of that. She now sits up at the front of our county building and greets people, directs the public to where they need to go inside this building. She is a part of our public information office. She does a lot of things for us. She does a lot of things for me individually. And she is a bright and shining star for our county, for our workforce, and I'm very proud of her. And watching what she's overcome in the last year and what she's doing professionally as well. So anyway, what I need to tell you about her is not only she thrived here, but she also recently passed her life insurance agent exam this fall. I'm not sure what that means for the future here, but anyway, I wish her well, whatever that, whatever she might plan to do with that. I know she'll be a success at it. So, Angelica, that's all I have to say about you. I didn't mean to embarrass you as much as I did, but you want to say anything to them?
I just want to say thank you and so.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Mr. Glover, did you want to make a comment?
No, I met Angelica since I've been on council at the greeting us, and she has been really an pleasant person to greet, to meet when you come into the building. And I always look for her because she's always there with a smile. So that's a good choice, Mr. Greenway. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next employee is Charles Dan Neeson. He works in our Hilton Head Airport as the airport maintenance supervisor. He's been with us for seven years and two months. He directs and supervises all airport maintenance and operational functions of the Hilton Head Island Airport. You're kind of busy down there, aren't you?
Well, that's true.
Yeah, continuing to grow. Something unique about Dan is that he is a proud husband and father. He served his country with honor as a United States Marine with multiple F/A-18 units abroad, MCAS Beaufort, South Carolina, as an aviation power plant's technician. We do not hold it against Dan for his love of the Cleveland Browns football team. That might be something that he shares in common with a council member, Mr. Glover. We all know that Mr. Glover is a Cleveland Browns fan as well. So Dan's always considerate and well-spoken. His calm demeanor while faced with difficult maintenance and operational situation allows him to engage every task with professionalism. Dan is highly respected by the airport team and is an extremely valuable asset to the airport and to Beaufort County. I'm going to turn the microphone over to you, see if you want to say anything.
I guess we all can't be perfect, you know. Some of us are Cleveland Browns fans, so it's okay. No, I just wanted to say thank you for this. I couldn't do without Mr. John Rembold, Mr. Steve Perry, leading us. And I could also kind of take this as, you know, a team achievement because I think without everybody I work with, I wouldn't be. So
Our next person is unable to attend tonight, but she works in our facilities management division. Her name is Doris Allen. We have a picture of her. She's been with us for 30 years. She's the administrative clerk. She started December 2, 1991, with the grounds maintenance, and then she transferred to facility maintenance in 2005 and has been working there ever since. Doris has been a longtime asset to Beaufort County. She assists the facility maintenance technicians with dispatching maintenance requests, processing invoices, and ordering parts and materials, along with many other duties that she does there. She enjoys spending time at home with her pets, working in her yard, and volunteering at her church. So let's give her a round of applause. I'm going to say one other thing. I'm going to introduce one other person. I'm going to turn it over to Dale Butts to introduce the final person tonight. Mark will come on up. This will conclude my part of the report, and then Dale Butts will come up. Again, this is an individual here that I knew both professionally and personally. His name is Mark Davis. He joined us around a week ago to be the deputy planning and zoning director for the county. I also had the pleasure of working with Mark when I was the Berkeley County planning director. He was my right-hand guy in the planning and zoning department there, was instrumental in assisting me and did most of the heavy legwork for something I'm, for two achievements there I'm very proud of, and that's the next mixed-use development plan there in Somerville, and also working with me on Count Hall track where the Volvo facility is currently located. So Mark and I spent many hours trying to navigate difficult political roads there at Berkeley County to bring about high-quality development. We were very successful in doing that. Mark is a graduate of the University of Maryland. We will not hold that against him. He's also, I understand, a Washington football team fan, though he doesn't like to admit that publicly now. So, and he recently came to us from Dorchester County to replace Rob Merchant as Rob Merchant moved up to be the director of planning and zoning here at the county. So I'm very proud to have Mark with us. You want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you for that introduction. I'm excited for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with everyone here and getting to know everyone.
While Dale's coming up, I'm going to just close out with one last thing. Tonight, we are all either Alabama fans, Georgia fans, or neither.
Good evening, council. I'd like to give you the opportunity to put a face with the name that you've been hearing over the last few weeks. Some of you will already know Patty Green, Mr. Fleellen professionally, obviously would know her with his line of work, and she's been in the community for a lot of years, so some of you may know her as well. But just want to tell you a little bit about our new register, my successor in that office. Ms. Patsy Green was born in Wytheville, Virginia, where she attended high school, graduated in 1977, and participated in athletics and cheerleading, and had aspirations of becoming a PE teacher, and then changed her major to architecture, and then later dropped out of school altogether when she met a local boy by the name of Bobby Green, who joined the Marine Corps, and in 1982, they made their way to Paris Island. When Bobby got out of the military, they remained in the Beaufort area and have lived in, and now live currently, in Royal Pines on Ladies Island. During Patsy's time in Beaufort, she returned to school, received her bachelor's degree in management from Park University, continued her education, and received a dual master's degree in human resources and management from Webster University. She was actually employed with the Beaufort County Register of Deeds Office from 1990 until 2005, when she was first, was appointed as the first registrar of deeds for Jasper County. Being the first, she got the opportunity to build that office from scratch into one of the most advanced technological offices when it comes to record-keeping. Patty is a member of Cornerstone Christians Church and has been so for 25 years. She serves as president of the Ladies Fellowship, is active in the drama department, and is the director of the annual Bethlehem Walk event. She's also president of the Coastal Region of South Carolina Public Records Association, and has been recently appointed to their state board. So after being gone for 16 years in Jasper County, Patty feels like she's finally come back home to friends and family. I know she's going to do a good job. This is your new register of deeds, Patty Green. Patty, you want to say a few words? Or you don't have to.
Yeah, no, just thank you for the warm welcome back. It's been a long time, but
Okay, that concludes our administrator's report. We're at our first citizen comments. Please come forward, Ms. Hamm.
My name is Joyce Hamm, and I'm here today because I received a letter, and the letter has on it something about a rental permit where you have to get a license to rent one piece of property. And the license that you're asking people to get is an accommodation license, and that accommodation license, I don't know why one would need an accommodation license to rent one piece of property when, when it's not necessarily rent to people who are transits. And the accommodation law for the state of South Carolina states that this accommodation document is for people who are transit, the people that are moving in and out and through our counties and want to, you know, take a part in our particular resources that we have here. And in doing so, that accommodation tax is for them to pay. I was never under the understanding that this accommodation tax is supposed to be for the people of Beaufort who's already paying property taxes. Now you want the people of Beaufort to get a license for how many pieces of property? I have no idea. And I don't know whether it's $50 for each property or however you are making your decisions. But at the same time, I still think it's a violation of our constitutional rights to engage in contract. Not only that, when you make a decision for me to sign a piece of paper, and when I come to Beaufort County, and they said every time I put my signature on a piece of paper, it's considered a contract. And so why should I have to engage in a contract with Beaufort County to engage in a contract with a friend of mine just to rent? And that's my position on that. When, and it's a concern to me that you guys are violating my constitutional right to engage in contract while at the same time, you're already appear to be in a lawsuit for violating the constitutional, this tax sales that is supposedly unconstitutional in the county of courthouse of Greenville, South Carolina, which is where I got this information from offline. So I was wondering what you guys, who provides oversight for this particular unit that you have here? How are you addressing the issues to Beaufort County about the violation that is in this lawsuit? And how are you going to pay us back if you don't tax us? When you make wrong decisions, you see, where are you going to get money from? And are you going to continue to tax and tax and tax and tax while you guys sit up on your high horse making over $100,000 a year? Well, it could be $90,000 or wherever, while the people of Beaufort are still in a, in a state of a pandemic here? We're not out of this pandemic, and you guys are just thinking it's okay to continue to tax us.
Is there anybody else who wishes to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and go to the liaison and committee reports. Is there any member of council who wishes to make a committee report? Mr. Rodman?
Yeah, one item on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, is item number four. It has to do with a access management plan for Buckwalder Parkway. And access management plans are basically a blueprint that lays out where the intersections are going to be and whether they have a traffic signal and that type of thing. It doesn't commit any kind of money or anything else, but it's used planning for people who are developing. So this particular one, which is now at second reading, covers the length of highway between 278 and the current Bluffton Parkway. I think it's non-controversial. We will come back later on and look at south of Bluffton Parkway going down toward 46 as a separate access management plan. So that's on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, on the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the executive committee, we have three items coming forward. One is to receive ARPA funds in the amount of $37,317,000. Another is to authorize the drug and alcohol department to apply for a grant, and finally, to appoint Dean Neller to the Central Point Special Tax District.
Any other comments? I do have one. As you know, we've had a tremendous number of individuals apply for legal resident applications, changing from 6% to 4%. The assessors' office and the treasurer's office have been working on a short-term solution to address the customer concerns about the outstanding legal resident applications. to address the customer concerns about the outstanding legal resident applications. Both the Assessors' Office and the Treasurer's Office have agreed to repeat last year's process, where they use the Refund Committee to approve the waiver of penalties for any outstanding legal resident application. This means that any customer whose application has not been processed by the Assessors' Office will not have to pay the penalty deadline. Once their application is processed, they will receive notification of the results and give them 30 days to pay without penalty, regardless of whether their 4% is approved or not. The Treasurer's Office has prepared and will be sending out approximately 3,000 letters to affected taxpayers by Monday, and will assist in support records management. Furthermore, the Assessors' Office has agreed to prioritize the applications of customers whose mortgage company has already paid the taxes. The significance of this means that those customers whose escrow payments will now have increased significantly will have their applications processed faster than they would have been otherwise. On behalf of Council, we commend both of the offices for addressing this issue, and we're looking forward to our county administrator and his staff to work with the Assessors' Office and the Treasurer's Office to come up with a long-term solution to address this annual problem. We begin with our public hearings and action items, and I would ask a member of Council to make a motion to approve our Consent Agenda. Mr. Somerville, may I have a second? Mr. Rodman, motion has been made for the Consent Agenda, and the Consent Agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 10 is matter rising out of the Caucus Executive Session. Mr. Somerville, would you please read the motion as the maker of the motion?
The motion is to authorize the county administrator to execute the settlement agreement discussed in the Executive Session.
May I have a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the item will...
Mr. Chairman, I have one item. We actually discussed two different settlement agreements, and I think it's important for us to say which one this is, what this regard. Settlement agreement regarding which one?
Bostick Lane.
Bostick Lane. All right, thank you.
Okay. Everybody understands that this is for the settlement agreement for Bostick Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No further discussion. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 11, I would ask a member to make a motion for the establishment of the Hawkers and Pedlers License Fees for 2022. Motion, please. Mr. Somerville makes the motion.
I'll second, sir.
Mr. Fluellen makes the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection. Next, our first public hearing and third reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey a portion of, accept a deed for, and convey a perpetual easement on a portion of property owned by Beaufort County with the TMS number 621000673, execute an amendment to a deed of perpetual easement on a portion of the property, and a donation to the Rural and Critical Lands Program. May I have such a motion, please? Mr. Rodman will make the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham will make the second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will vote against this for reasons previously stated, ad nauseam, audidium.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Glover?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm going to take the position a little different. I'm supporting this motion, not because of the nature of this motion, but I want to support the staff, and I think they did a splendid job of putting this together. They would dealt a bad hand, and I think in doing so, they actually came up with a good result. So I'm going to support it because of the staff, not because of the action of the board. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public input on this? Seeing none, the public input will be closed, and we will have a vote on this. Okay, we begin with Mr. Rodman, who made the motion. You get to go first. Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Dawson? Mr. Fluellen?
No.
Mr. Glover?
Yes, for the staff.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McKellen? And the Chair votes yes, so it is one, two, three, four, five, six...
Mr. Somerville has it voted.
You didn't get me, Joe.
Oh, he?
No.
You're no?
You were a no.
You're right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, four, no, and the motion is approved. Item number 13 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Storm Water Management Utility Ordinance as adopted September 26, 2016, to address the adoption of the Southern Low Country Design Manual. A motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Howard made the motion. Second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Fluellen makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion before I handle the public hearing? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment regarding this? Seeing none, the public session will be closed, and there is no further discussion. This item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 14 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code for Section A dot 3 dot 4 0 permitted activities to revise the Lady Islands Expanded Home Business District to include short-term rentals as a special use. Mr. Somerville makes the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any comments before I go to the public? Seeing none, are there any comments from the public? I see none, therefore we'll close the public hearing on this. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 15 is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to amend the Storm Water Management Utility Ordinance as adopted September 26, 2016, provide for the adoption of the storm water management standards set forth in the Southern Low Country Design Manual to meet municipal separate storm water system known as MS4 permit requirements.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. Second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any comments by any member of Council? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to comment about this particular item? Seeing none, the public hearing portion will end, and this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 16 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance redistricting the County Council of Beaufort County. A motion, please. Mr. Rodman makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Fluellen makes the second. Those of you who are in attendance, you can see the alternate 3A, which is the preferred alternate in the back, and what the districts will look like under the proposed redistricting. Are there any comments by members of County Council?
I have a question. I was looking at those two maps. Are you saying that they both reflect 3A? Because I'm assuming the one on the right is 3A. I'm sorry, the one on the, I'm getting myself confused.
The right is current, 3A is on the left.
Yeah, that's the current council district, and that's going to be what it's going to look like under the new setup.
So 3A is the...
Yeah, preferred alternative.
My left, yeah, okay, I got it, thank you.
Mr. Fluellen?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, several, a month and a half ago or so, maybe a little bit earlier, we had meetings around the county to introduce the process and to give the first draft of the maps to the public, yet we've not gone around the county to receive public input. And I'm a little bit disappointed that we haven't had meetings south of the Broad, because I assume that the meetings, the County Council meetings north of the Broad, provide sufficient opportunity for people to come and talk. But I would like to be able, I would like you to have a meeting south of the Broad, one or two, one in Bluffton, one in Hilton Head, if at all possible, to receive public comment, or at least provide some opportunity for a remote access through the library system. We used to do that, also on Defusky Island perhaps, and maybe even in Bluffton. We used to be able to receive public comment from remote locations, and yet we've not really done that here. I'm going to vote for this. I think it's a good plan. I encourage everybody to look at it and give us your feedback. I've received comments from people, and I encourage other people to reach out to their county councilmen and let them know how they feel, positive and negative. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Count me as a yes.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Just one. Also, just for those that may be viewing, this also is for the school district, because the school districts mirror what we have on County Council as we go forward.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Fluellen missed the meetings that we held south of the Broad.
I didn't.
There was, well, you weren't there. There were rather extensive audience of people who appeared there. In fact, I think it was probably the numbers at the Hilton Head meeting were higher than any of the other two that we had.
No, I discussed that. I discussed that.
Excuse me, may I finish? The community was engaged fully prior to the meeting and at the meeting that we held at the Island Recreation Center, and we all came to the conclusion that we had to take action to ensure that the map was drawn appropriately from a data engineering view and a political engineering view. And we all came to agreement that the 3A map would be the map that we would put forward, showing those changes that everybody approved of. So I'm not sure why you're saying that we didn't have a meeting there. I think it was probably the most well-attended meeting of all the meetings we had countywide.
Thanks. May I respond?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Maybe you weren't listening to me, Mr. McKellen. I said the meetings prior to the adoption of first reading, we have not had a meeting about the actual proposed voted-on maps. We introduced the process, we showed, we went around the county, including on Hilton Head, and showed a version of the map, but it was not something that we had voted on. We've not had those meetings since we started first reading and second reading of this map, so, thank you.
Okay.
Just one last comment relative to the Hilton Head piece. As Larry said, there was a good turnout, and actually there were two maps generated, a 3A and a 3B, and we did get feedback from the leadership in the various communities, and I believe it's kind of unanimous from those folks that they like 3A, and that's the path we're going down.
Okay, is there any other comments before I go to the public to see if there's any public comments? Seeing none, is there anybody in the public who wishes to comment about these?
I'll comment. Again, my name is Joyce Hamm, and I wanted to know, because the last time you all did a redistricting, whether it was the last or not, I do know that we got rid of Herbert Glaze's district and joined it together with Mr. Dawson's district, and so I was wondering, are we going to lose any council members as we voted these changes in the districts? And are we going to, how do you break it down in terms of population, and how, so that we can know how these votes are going to happen when you start voting, so that it doesn't impact the voters' rights, so that we are at a disadvantage?
The population was divided by 11, 187,000 members that were counted in the census. Therefore, each census block, each district should have 17,011 members. That has been done. You will see what the districts look like. On the right is currently what we have right now. On the left-hand side is the preferred alternative that gets us as close as we possibly can to the 17,011 members in each district. There will still be 11 council members, so I hope that answers your question. Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will close the public comments at this time. It was duly motioned and seconded, and we will approve this as the second reading without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, item number 16 is approved. Item number 17 is a public hearing of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents for the purchase of real property known as Academy Park. May I have such a motion? Please. Mr. Rodman makes the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Any discussion by members of Council? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to comment on item number 17? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 18 is a first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to purchase the BCSO Dowling Lots. May I have such a motion, please?
Go move.
Mr. Somerville makes the motion. Second.
I will second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Any discussion by members of Council regarding this? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Hervishan, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm not going to take a long time to belabor the point, but I voted against this back on the 13th of December, and we're going to vote against it again tonight. I just frankly don't think that this is the most efficient way to accomplish what we need to accomplish here. I don't think it's the best use of taxpayer dollars. I would much rather prefer that we look at a lease as opposed to purchasing it. I think that that would have been a better option, but apart from that, I will refer everybody back to the comments I made last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? This will be approved with one objection.
Two.
Two. This will be approved with two objections. Mr. Hervishan and Mr. Cunningham will vote no. All other members will say yes, and therefore this is approved 9-2. Item number 19 is a first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget for Graves Road. May I have such a motion, please? Obviously, Paul, you're not going to make that motion.
Probably not.
Mr. Rodman will make the motion. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Fluellen will make the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any comments? Mr. Somerville?
I will vote against this for things previously mentioned by me, ad nauseam, audidium.
Mr. Chairman, I request a roll call vote.
Okay. Duly motioned and seconded. Any other comments before we do a roll call vote? Seeing none. Okay, Mr. Rodman, you made the motion. You will go first. Mr. Fluellen, you were second?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
No. No.
Mr. Glover?
Uh, no.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McKellen?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Mr. Somerville?
No.
Chair says yes. Motion carries. Seven yes, four no. Item number 20 is a resolution to accept the South Carolina Department of Commerce Grant Award for Project Mira in the amount of $50,000. May I have such a motion?
So moved, sir.
Mr. Flouelling makes the motion. Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 21 is a resolution accepting a grant award from the Department of Justice for the Beaufort County Coroner's Office in the amount of $113,227. A motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Flouelling makes the motion. Second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry. Mr. Dawson makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 22 is a resolution to accept a grant award from the Department of Justice for the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $70,005. Motion?
Make a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard made the motion, and Mr. Dawson made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any comments by any member of council? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. We are at our second citizen comment. Anyone wish to make a comment at this time?
Is this the end of the day?
It's the end of the day.
Okay, yeah, I got it. I really just wanted to know, I made a statement earlier about the taxes, and I just wanted to know, how am I going to get response back on that?
I believe you did talk to our county attorney, who will put you in contact with the right office.
Okay.
Okay? So afterwards, if you will see the county attorney, he will tell you exactly who and how to get in contact with that individual. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we are at the evening's end. Are there any other comments to come forward before county council, before we adjourn? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. So what else?
Yes.